Okay. I call, I call the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Please find your seat. Please find your seat. We're starting the meeting. Thank you very much. City Clerk Ben Lane, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor David Ortega?
Present.
Vice Mayor Barry Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Stanie Capooty?
Here.
Tom Durham?
Here.
Betty Janik?
Here.
Kathy Littlefield?
Here.
And Solange Whitehead?
Here.
City Manager Jim Thompson?
Here.
City Attorney Sherry Scott?
Here.
City Treasurer Sonia Andrews?
Here.
Acting City Auditor Lay Cleff?
Here.
And the Clerk is present. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. We have Scottsdale Police Sergeant Sean Ryan and Detective Tyler Neese, as well as firefighter Emma Hayden, should anyone need assistance. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call on Councilwoman Littlefield.
At this time, I want us to draw our attention to all deployed American military worldwide as they represent our democracy and fight for freedom and maybe in other countries. So I ask for us to join together in silence and reflection for these war-torn areas.
Thank you. Last week, we lost a wonderful human being, former council member Robert Petticrew. Robert was a city councilman. I served with him for two years. He served from ninety-four during the period when the McDowell Mountain Preserve was established, and he was a key player in that entire endeavor. He's a Scottsdale, excuse me, a Scottsdale Coronado High graduate and really gave his love and his life in our community. We do want to turn our attention to his loved ones and family and Janet, and so let's, let's take a brief moment for an honorable man who served our city very well. Thank you, Robert Petticrew. Next, we'll call on City Manager Jim Thompson to provide the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a short video for you.
I'm Public Affairs Supervisor Holly Peralta with five fast things happening around the city you need to know. Our number five spot is a nod to Scottsdale's revised quarterly performance report, the QPR. Did you know the city tracks thirty-two performance metrics across the full range of city departments and operations? They are all included in the QPR, which is freshly updated so that it's easier for residents to see how the city is performing in these key areas. The data is updated each quarter, offering a fresh look into the city's key performance measures. Visit performance.scottsdaleaz.gov to take a look. Number four is a call for residents wishing to volunteer their time to serve Scottsdale. The city has several openings on various boards and commissions, and now is the time to apply. Learn more and apply online at scottsdaleaz.gov. Search Boards and Commissions. The Miller and Jack Rabbit Roads intersection sits in our number three spot. The city made safety enhancements to improve pedestrian access to the Arizona Canal Path and increased driver visibility. A citizen petition prompted the project, which led to a traffic study that supported the changes. Improvements include a high-visibility crosswalk aligned with the path, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, trail-crossing signs, narrower vehicle lanes at the curve to provide an east-side buffer, and improved visibility at the road curve. Number two is a kudo to Scottsdale Water Executive Director Brian Beesmeyer. He was recently named Person of the Year by the Arizona Water Association and Arizona Water Reuse at the 2024 Arizona Water Reuse Symposium. Brian is recognized as a true leader in the water industry. Under his leadership, Scottsdale Water was the first to receive an advanced water purification permit in Arizona and the first to launch a citizen water academy. He leads the vision of water sustainability through stewardship, innovation, and people. Way to go, Brian. And our number one fast-five spot goes to our dedicated park staff, emergency response team, Streets Department, and public safety personnel. A microburst in McCormick Ranch earlier this month caused significant damage to our parks and trees. Mountain View, Rotary, and Comanche Parks were hit the hardest, and the areas outside the city's North Corporation Yard also suffered damage. Multiple crews worked overnight to clear our roadways for early morning rush hour and spent the day working to remove damaged trees and clear pathways. The effort didn't go unnoticed by residents. Many chimed in on social media to express thanks and show their support. And that's our Fast Five for August. See you next time.
Excellent. Thank you. A public service announcement during tonight's meeting. The council may make a motion to recess into executive session to obtain legal advice on any applicable item on the agenda. If authorized by the council, the executive session will be held immediately and would not be open to the public. The public meeting would then resume following an executive session. Also, per our council rules of procedure, citizens attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to members of council and city staff. So other unauthorized remarks and noise would be disruptive to us and could result in removal. Next, the council recently updated our rules. Council members shall not send electronic communications while attending public meetings or executive sessions. Only electronic devices supplied by the city and approved for use during city council meetings may be used, and all other electronic devices would be stored elsewhere. The next portion of our agenda is public comment. Public comment is reserved for Scottsdale citizens, businesses, owners, and property owners who can comment on non-agendized items that are within, within the city council's jurisdiction. Advocacy for or against a candidate or ballot measure during a council meeting is not allowed pursuant to state law and is therefore deemed not to be within the council's jurisdiction. No official council action can be taken on these non-agendized items, and of course, you're allowed three minutes to address the council. If you wish, you should have checked in with our clerk, and then I will announce your name, and you would come forward. I have a listing of three at this time. So I will open public comment. Our first two are Sharon D. Schiffauer and Jason and Stephanie Allen. So if you would come forward, Sharon, and speak at the microphone to my left, and you'll see a timer there available for you.
Okay. My name is Sharon Schiffauer, and this is my son, Charles Schiffauer. My home address is seven five two four East Cactus Ren in Scottsdale, eight five two five oh. Just gonna speak from my phone here. We are here today to submit two-hundred-and-nine signatures that Charles collected in support of road diets and road studies. What we have found by communicating with our neighbors is that walkers want their paths widened, as in the case of McCormick Ranch, and in reference to those signatures that were submitted on February twentieth. The paths are very narrow in McCormick Ranch. And so cyclists would prefer to be on the street, but our streets need to be safer. Charles is a bicycle commuter to school, and my husband commutes to work on his bike. Rain or shine, summer or winter, we are a year-round bicycle family. The bicycle industry has completely changed, especially since COVID. In the past, if you were on a bike, you were probably broke with a DUI, right? This anti-bike cowardice mentality is really antiquated and ignorant. Let's bring you up to speed with some hard data. According to Perrek McGillan, he's the owner of Psychologic, which is a bike shop in Scottsdale, the average cost of a road bike in his shop is eight thousand dollars. When you throw in accessories like a helmet, clothes, lights, heart monitor, shoes, you're up to fifteen hundred dollars. Annual service costs, like tires, tubes, and maintenance, is about five hundred dollars a year. Six of his clients are billionaires. He has over one hundred DECA millionaires as bike clients. Bike shops in Scottsdale bring over three hundred million a year in gross revenue, and e-bikes are completely taking over the market. By 2030, annual e-bike sales would be over seven billion dollars, and this translates to two million more bikes on the road every year. More e-bikes are being sold than cars, and this explosion in growth is not going away. We need to expand access, not minimize it. I hope everyone running for office is listening, because we have been a quiet majority for way too long. We have our own Lance Armstrong right here in Scottsdale. I don't know if you know that. He's an international celebrity cyclist. His name is Brandon McNulty. He lives here, and he just won the Volta two days ago. That's a really big deal. That's like the Tour de France of Spain. So there's no reason why Scottsdale cannot be a world-class cycling destination, and I hope that one day you do finish Thomas as promised, because we're angry too, and we are mobilizing. Thank you for your time, Mayor and council members.
Thank you. If you could stay there. We do acknowledge that we've received a petition.
Yes.
And also, I have a request from Councilwoman Whitehead.
I just want to thank your son for riding his bike to school. My kids, two out of three of my kids did as well, so I think that's really cool.
Well, that petition that came out in February that said there were angry residents, and I said, that, that's, that can't be true. And Charles immediately said, Dad, make a petition. I'm gonna hang out at AJ's, and I'm collecting signatures. And I said, go, do it. And, and when we, we ended up talking to some of our neighbors in McCormick Ranch, they just want the paths widened, because it's too narrow for the amount of traffic. And every year, that, that traffic on those pathways are, are growing, growing more and more and more, especially the e-bikes, which are faster, and the walkers don't like that because they always get frightened. So we want to find a balance where everyone could use the paths.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jason and Stephanie Allen, and then Stephen Allen Sutton.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here at the request of my neighbors to speak on behalf of our small neighborhood within their greater desert foothills area, specifically the neighbors residing between Joe Maxx and Pinnacle Vista to the south and north, and Seventy-sixth and Seventy-seventh Street to the west and east. We are passionately opposed to the creation of neighborhood trails, as they're called, through our properties. I know you've seen emails from some of my, my neighbors to show you just how passionate they are about this particular topic. This portion of desert foothills is comprised of eleven houses. Ten of us have signed the petition passionately opposed to the creation of ten-foot-wide trails through our properties, destroying the natural landscaping, and then burdening the property owners with the obligation to maintain these trails. The project is a four-foot-wide trail with three feet of clear vegetation on either side, effectively a ten-foot scar cut through our properties. In our communication with project managers and in our petition, we show clear photographic evidence that the existing trails in the broader area around our neighborhood are unused and therefore unwanted. Trail markers amidst overgrown vegetation are all that remain of trails that were created along Seventy-sixth Street and Joe Maxx Road, and in our petition, you will see those photos. These trails are returned to the wild as they were not used. There is no community upward from my neighborhood to reestablish these trails. Our photos also show that when the trails, or even paved sidewalks, are present in the area, people still prefer to walk on the roads. They like the solid footing and the ability to actually walk beside one another and talk while they're out enjoying the neighborhood. While the trails in this neighborhood may have been created with the best intentions, the lack of use clearly demonstrates that they miss their intended purpose. As someone who regularly uses Scottsdale's primary and secondary trail system, I can tell you personally, I appreciate them and think they're an asset to the city. However, the neighborhood trail system in the desert foothills area is clearly missing its intended objective. In closing, I want to leave you with three points. Creating more trails in this neighborhood is an irresponsible waste of taxpayer money to expand a project in an area where it is a proven failure. Please refer to the photos, and you will see what I'm talking about. Nobody is calling on city council to address these current trails that have returned to the wild. The second point, it will unnecessarily damage our natural desert landscaping through our properties, and we expect it will take about five years to return to the wild, as we've seen the previous trails do. Further, our neighborhood does not represent a broken link in the chain connecting any other trail systems. These trails are dead ends and would only serve the benefit of the homeowners who are telling you that they don't want them. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you, Allens. And we have a comment or request from Councilmember Jerome.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, I've seen some of these trails. I've seen the markers. Would the, would the new trails be paved, or is this just sort of a continuation of what we have now, which is kind of a dirt path?
It's a continuation of what we have now. In, in the project plan, they carved four feet and put down a compacted base, which is just decomposed granite, and then cleared the, the bushes on three feet of either side. So much of the choia, much of the cactus, anything that resembles a bush close by gets wiped out.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Allen Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Graham, and council members. My name is Stephen Sutton. I live at six-six-three-seven North Eighty-first Street, the Hayden Estates area, near Lincoln and Hayden Road. I'd like to give you a little more context in my comments tonight in that I'm a native of the valley, a graduate of Scottsdale High School, and I've lived forty of my sixty-five years in Scottsdale, on and off since nineteen sixty-six. So I've seen a lot happen in, in the city over that time, including the building of this building. I'm here because I want to talk to you about a usage issue and a public safety issue, and that is in regard to the Scottsdale Chaparral Dog Park, of which there will be a meeting tomorrow at the Parks and Recreation Conference Room about this issue. But I wanted to meet the council, as I've never been to a city council meeting in all the time I've been here, although I did once have the mayor as my government teacher at Scottsdale High School. That was Mayor Jenkins. Chaparral Dog Park is without a doubt the best dog park in the valley, and it's served us well since it was built, but it is definitely in need of some improvement, both in rules and public safety. And I want to address the public safety first, because that's the most important thing. I'm there mornings, Monday through Friday, sometimes on the weekends, early. It's probably the best and most tranquil time to be there. However, I observe on a weekly basis altercations between individuals and dogs being injured. I personally have had a small dog that someone refused to rein in their dog, and, and it was attacked. And when asked nicely to do something about it from this much younger and much larger man, thought I was going to be involved in a physical altercation, because he immediately became hostile. I'd like to suggest that the city start thinking about possibly putting some video surveillance in that area, so that if incidents do happen, there might be some protection in the way of evidence of it. I'll address all the usage issues tomorrow in depth, but the main issue here is those parks are getting to be too small. With all the apartments that have been built, we're just gonna have more and more dogs coming there, because these people in apartments do not have backyards for their dogs to run in. And it might be time to consider creating an addition to that park by maybe taking away one of those softball fields that's next to it, or possibly in the area between Camelback and Chaparral, where we have a park which seems to get very little usage. In closing, I would just want to say that there's quite a few people who feel like I do, but most of them will be at the meeting tomorrow night. I think you're gonna be hearing about this again very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. At this point, I will close public comment, and for those who presented petitions, you know there's a further action later in the meeting. Next, we have the approval of the minutes and any request for revisions. I request a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty-four, also the special meeting minutes of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and finally, the executive session minutes of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, we move on to the consent agenda items. That's items one through twenty-one A. Also, for the record, I would point out that the agenda was amended on August fourteenth, and item number twenty-one A, it's a settlement agreement that was added to the agenda that you see today. We have an opportunity for council members to have, who may have questions, to present them, but we also have an opportunity for the public to come forward with any comments, and therefore, at this point, I would open public comment. And I noticed there is one speaker, Lee Koftow, who will be coming forward. Thank you, sir. He wishes to speak about item number twenty-one.
Mayor, I was, Mayor, I was gonna kindly request to pull that from agenda, from consent.
Well, we're gonna hear public comment now, and, and, and I, I'll be getting to that next.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you, sir. Okay, come right up and...
Hi there. My name is Lee Koftow. My address is on file. I just wanted to speak about agenda item twenty-one. That is going to revise the city code as far as urban camping is concerned. Reading the revision and being aware of the recent Supreme Court ruling on Grants Pass, and just generally being passionate. You guys have heard me get up here plenty of times about topics regarding homelessness. I don't see the need for the city to make this change to our rules. You know, as we have discussed before, at our point, point in time, there was eighty-five individuals identified as homeless within the city borders. And, and basically, we have the tools currently. I think the current rule, which says that, you know, you need to provide some sort of help to get them to some sort of shelter, rather than treating them as criminal, treating people as criminals for not having housing, is, is a good policy. And, and basically, I just wanted to make sure that I got that on the record, you know, that nothing's really changed. I don't see the need for this. There isn't a overwhelming problem. And, you know, as I've, you, as you yourself, Mayor, have mentioned, if you are living in Scottsdale, you are a citizen of Scottsdale, and I think our least, our least fortunate deserve the most compassion that, that we can and not to criminalize their existence. That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lee. You still have a minute and a half. Wait, wait. So we will, we had a request from Vice Mayor to have the item heard, and if you have any other thoughts, you, you will have a chance, because it looks like we're gonna pull that to regular?
Maybe not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, thank you, sir, very much. And then, there may be a question from a council, Vice Mayor Graham, to staff, not, not you.
Correct. I had a question about item fourteen, but not twenty-one.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, thank, thank you all.
And Councilwoman Janik?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like some more information on item number ten, the Shea Boulevard intersection improvements, to make sure that our community knows that there's gonna be significant road construction. So I would like the presentation. Thank you.
And to be clear, you wanted presentation on number fourteen, or did you just have a question?
It can be in a bridge presentation. I just had a couple quick questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, but you're not requesting it on regular agenda.
I don't think so.
So, okay, then, please step forward and to answer Vice Mayor's questions regarding item number fourteen, which has to do with public utilities, construction manager at risk.
Mayor, we're, we're out of order. Councilmember Janik was number ten. Are you okay with that?
Well, you spoke first, so...
Oh, wow. Thank you. Hi, Allison.
Good evening.
Good evening. Very quickly about item number fourteen. This has to do, I'll read the Gravity Sewer Tournament Players Club Golf Course to North Pumpback Station Project Construction Phase Contract Modification. I just wanted to get it on the record. Are we, this is about, you know, the sewer line up in northern Scottsdale. Are we adding to it, or just for the public's benefit, are we just, are we just choosing a vendor here and authorizing that? There's no addition to the project scope. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor Graham, that is correct. So we are not adding any funds to the project. We are awarding the GMP number three within the existing funding that we have on this project now.
Just wanted to ask it and hear it. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Now we will go to item number...
Can I ask a question on that?
On the same subject?
Yes, same subject, Allison. Allison, where'd you go?
I'm right here.
Oh, sorry. Just to clarify in this, it's my understanding that we get reimbursed for expenses on the sewer line, that people who are gonna be... sewer line, that people who are going to be moving into that territory and using that territory will have to reimburse us for these expenses. Is that right?
Mayor, council members, Councilmember Durham, so that is correct for the portion of the project that is the IIP, the infrastructure portion of the project. We do get paybacks on that.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. We would now move to item 10 pertaining to the circulation element. And Councilwoman Janik, you have the floor.
Thank you. I was, I was curious about the intersections that will be affected, if there will be through traffic at those intersections, about how long it's going to take, just general information because I think it's a very busy road and we need to make sure the public is aware that this work will be going on. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is item number 10, the construction bid award for the Shea Boulevard intersection improvements, Loop 101 to 136th Street. And it's to adopt the resolution to award the construction bid award in the amount of $3,243,450 to AJP Electric. Next slide, please. This is just an overall map that shows the four intersections, the four areas that the project covers. Next slide, please. Okay, this is a description of the work that's occurring at each of the locations. At Villa Linda, we are adding turn lanes, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, paving, restriping, and new traffic signals. At 110th Street, we're doing drainage improvements, additional turn lanes, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, paving, restriping, and new traffic signals. Next slide, please. From 112th Street to 114th Street, we're doing additional turn lanes, new sidewalks, curb, gutter, existing underpath and pathway, underpass and pathway upgrades, paving, restriping, and new traffic signals. And at 136th Street, we're doing additional turn lanes, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, paving, restriping, and new traffic signals. And primarily, this project, the intent is to improve the, to improve the efficiency of this very busy corridor. And by doing that, the turn lane improvements will improve the efficiency. Additionally, the construction is scheduled for about 180 days. However, we do have a moratorium in place on Shea Boulevard from the end of November through the end of March. The 136th Street location does not fall within that moratorium. The moratorium is from Scottsdale Road to Frank Lloyd Wright. So the other three locations will occur beyond the moratorium. Those will start construction late March, early April. So 136th Street will be the first location to start construction.
And will the lanes be shut down with detours? Or will you still have a couple of lanes that allow through traffic?
Yes, we will have traffic barricades and we will be allowing through traffic as, as we are able.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So to be clear, on our consent agenda items, 1 through 21A, we had one request to speak, and I, therefore, I close the public comment. And I'm open to a, questions were asked and answered, therefore, I'm open to a motion on item, Consent Agenda Items 1 through 21A.
So I, I move that we accept items 1 through...
Approved.
Approved, sorry, 21A. Did I misunderstand? I thought, Barry, you wanted one of them pulled.
No.
No?
I, I thought about it, but I, I heard some testimony and then I withdrew it, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I have Councilwoman Kaputi wishing to speak.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one follow-up comment on the case that we just saw. Allison, you know, construction is painful, but I think that actually, wow, cause for celebration. We are adding lanes, adding lanes, adding lanes, adding lanes. This is going to be fantastic. Shea Boulevard is a very busy road that we get most of the comments and complaints about Shea, and I just want to celebrate the city for being proactive and adding lanes where they're most needed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I also want to comment on item number 18, which has to do with our police department. And congratulations on gaining that grant and improving our dispatch for our safety. Accordingly, we have a motion and a second. Please record your vote. Thank you. We are unanimous. Moving on, we have a regular agenda item, number 22, so-called Cosante Commons, also known as Sundown Commons. It's case number two, GP 2023, 6ZN 2023, and 3DA 2023. The applicant has requested a continuance to the December 3, 2024 council meeting. This is the applicant's second continuance request. Therefore, the continuance is not granted. As a matter of right, the council may vote to approve the second continuance request or may elect for the case to be presented this evening. I would like to hear briefly from the applicant on the continuance request. Please step forward. And we also, at this point, actually, we want to have Katie Posler, our senior planner, discuss the, the project. My, my notes say that, but perhaps you can walk us through it, Mr. Barry.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, for your record, John Berry, 6750 Camelback Road in Scottsdale. First off, Mayor, if I could, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
I believe I do not see any requests.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the, of the council, this is our second request for a continuance. And I think I'd just give you a little insight as the rationale for the continuance. I think the council recognizes that in terms of public and community engagement, summertime is not the optimal time to engage in that. And the council has seen that with some of the other cases that have come forward in the past. And in fact, you've changed your recommended community outreach guidelines as a result of that. We want to continue our community engagement, and the summertime was and is a bad time to, or difficult time to, to complete that or to do that. Additionally, the second reason is that, like many people in America, we are waiting to see what the Federal Reserve is going to do with interest rates in September and November. That will have a real impact on the economic viability of this project, and we do not want to proceed with your time, staff's time, until we have a great deal of certainty that we'll be able to do what we say we're going to do if the project is approved by the council. So with that in mind, we would very much respectfully request a continuance to the December 3, 2024 city council hearing to allow full community involvement as well. Thank you.
Okay, so I will clarify. There was no request from the public to speak, therefore, I close public comment at this point. We have heard from the applicant. Does anyone on council have a comment? And then I would entertain, entertain a motion. The request is for a continuance to the December 3, 2024 city council meeting. Go ahead. Councilwoman Janik.
Is it okay if I make a motion now? Okay. I'd like to mo, to make a motion to continue item number 22, Cosante Commons, AKA Sundown Commons, to GP 2023, 6ZN 2023, and 3DA 2023, to the December 3, 2024 city council meeting.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Thank you. Please record your vote. Thank you. That's unanimous. We'll see you...
Thank you all very much.
...in December. At this point, we will turn to public comment again, second, second opportunity for citizens and residents to step forward on a non-agendized item. I'm told there is no, there, there are no additional requests for public comment, therefore, I will close public comment. Moving on, we will get to our citizen petitions. That's item number 23. As you heard from public comment, there were two citizen petitions, one from Sharon Schiffauer and her son, and one from the Allens. Let's look at the action that would be required. The petitions were submitted, duly submitted to the clerk, and they're at our desks here. And we could take actions on, on them individually in three different manners. Would we like a second presentation by any of the petitioners?
Yes, Mayor. You, you, you all have three options with the petitions. You can direct the city manager to agendize the petition for future discussion, direct the city manager to investigate the matter and prepare a written response to the council with a copy to the petitioner, or take no action.
Okay, so I will discuss the, I will bring these forward in the order that they were presented. And the first one was pertaining to supporting roadways and road studies. The petitioners came forward and explained their needs. I see Vice Mayor Graham and Councilwoman Whitehead. We are not going to discuss the particulars of the petitions themselves. We would just be discussing how we would direct action. Sometimes I'm used to seeing the motions up on the, on the board, but it's okay. So I, I'm seeing Vice Mayor Graham and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to direct city manager to investigate and provide a response in writing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, please record your vote. Thank you. Unanimous, 7-0. The next item was presented by Stephanie Allen and her husband regarding the request and questions at the Desert Foothills Expansion Project. Councilwoman Whitehead.
I'm going to also make a motion to direct the city manager to investigate the matter and prepare a written response to council, and in particular, about how it affects the existing trails that may not be, I'd like to see an overlay. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, please record your vote. Thank you. Unanimous, 7-2-0. Thank you very much. At this point, we have concluded the agenda items, and therefore, I am, I, I request a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Please record your vote. Unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.